Okay, I think that's better. Okay, if anyone could just have a seat. I'm gonna get the call of meaning to order here, just as a reminder. Uh, for everyone, I see if you, if you up there with hats, if you could just please remove your hats, we have a local biolaboratory hat at the town meeting, I appreciate if you would do that for me. We are also on school property, and there's no smoking on the property at all, I know. We're probably all used to that by now, but also, just a little dance I like to make. So, oh yeah, and also if you could turn your cellphone to silent, appreciate it. And if we could now, please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Okay, before we get started with the warrant, I'd just like to recognize Mr. Sullivan for a moment, please.
I hate to have everybody stand up again, but could I ask for a moment of silence? Recently, we had a death of one of our registrars, Karen McKinney, who, if you came to town meetings in the last eight, 10 years, Karen was one of the ladies out front that checked us in. So with the moderator's consent, I'd like to ask everybody to rise for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to recognize Mr. Durant, who's here tonight, to say a few words in regard to how we're doing up there on State House.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, I was gonna deliver my 20-page report this evening, but Mr. Barron, uh, you told me to keep it to one page, so for you, I gotta do all that. So basically, I just wanted to give you a quick rundown of the budget process in the Massachusetts Legislature. As you probably know, the governor filed his budget, um, this year, bringing down spending a little bit from, uh, from at least slowing the rate of growth. Previous budgets had been growing at approximately 8%. Uh, the governor filed the budget earlier this year that drop spending increases to about 4%, uh, which was within lines of, uh, anticipated revenues. Our revenues are going about 5%. Uh, after the governor files his budget, the Massachusetts House of Representatives goes through a process of, uh, having public hearings for the House Ways and Means Committee, and we filed our budget at the end of April, we deliberated it the last week of April, and we have published a budget that keeps spending growth to about 3%. It actually came in a little bit below what the, uh, the governor was looking for. Uh, the budget contains no new taxes or increased fees. Uh, we continue to reduce our reliance on one-time revenue sources, uh, and for the first time since 2007, we do not withdraw any resources from the Commonwealth Stabilization Fund. Uh, this will keep our rate day fund balance in excess of $1 billion, which is an important factor in maintaining our state's bond rates. We are successful in reducing the size of government by incentivizing an early retirement program, which both the House and Senate, uh, and the governor has signed, the House and Senate passed, and the governor has signed, saving approximately $170 million per year to the Commonwealth. On the local aid front, we provided 34 million dollar increase to the unrestricted government aid, uh, and 108 million increase in Chapter 70 funding, which is your educational funding. This includes a guaranteed increase of $25 per pupil, uh, over the governor's $20 per pupil number, uh, for every school district. We also recognize that the local aid goes beyond these two accounts, and we make improvements to begin to restore the reductions, uh, in regional school transportation and to once again, fully fund the state's share of special education circuit rate. Overall, the House of Representatives' budget increased by 3.6%. Uh, the unrestricted local aid for the town of Dudley is 1.6 million, actually, $1,647,083. Uh, a total increase for the town of Charlton of $1,818,000, which is an increase of about $54,000 from last year. Chapter 70 money to the Dudley Child of Freedom, it was 70, uh, I'm sorry, $23 million, nearly $24 million. Also of note to the town of Dudley is the Chapter 90 Review Commission, I'm sorry, the Chapter 70 Review Commission, which is undergoing a review of how it is that we allocate money to regional school districts. Uh, that commission has held a number of public hearings across the state. They'll be issuing their final reports, uh, actually, it ends up being that they're gonna file, they're gonna issue a preliminary report in June, and we expect the final reports and recommendations to come out in, uh, in the fall. This is gonna be important for the town of Dudley, and as well as Charlton, uh, being part of the school district, to see how this all shakes out and may affect, uh, how budgeting occurs after this. So that's just a quick, brief update, uh, Mr. Barron, good? That was good? Alright, so we're good. So thank you, everybody, enjoy the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Durant, appreciate it, thanks for coming. Okay, this time, I'm gonna open up the warrant, and I'll recognize the town clerk.
Can you hear me? "To either the constables in the town of Dudley and the county of Worcester greetings, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Dudley qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to meet in the Shepherd Hill Regional High School Auditorium at said Dudley on Monday, May 18th, 2015, and Tuesday, May 19th, 2015, if needed, and other such times as may be voted, if needed, at 7:00 PM then and there to take action on the following articles."
Move to dispense with the reading of the articles, hear no objections, so move.
"You are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof at the Dudley Municipal Center and on the Town of Dudley website, and by posting notice of availability of the warrant on one cable access channel. Warrant to be posted at least seven days before holding of said meeting. Hereof fail not and make due return of this warrant or your doing thereon to the town clerk at the time of holding of said meeting. Given under our hands this 27th day of April in the year 2015, John J. Marcy Chairman, Peter Fox Vice Chairman, Stephen Sullivan Clerk, Jonathan Ruda, Paul Joseph, Dudley Board of Selectmen. I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Dudley by posting up attested copies of the same at the Dudley Municipal Center on the 29th of April 2015, and Shepherd Hill Regional High School on the 29th of April 2015. I also observed it posted on the town's website and notice of availability on the Dudley Cable Access Channel on the 29th of April 2015, thereby making my return to the Dudley Town Clerk on the 1st of May 2015, Theodore Jacoby Aaron, Senior Constable, Town of Dudley."
Thank you. Article 1, "See if the town will vote to receive the reports of the several town officers and all committees, or take any other action relative thereto." I'll recognize the FAA.
The FAA recommends this article be accepted as written, and I so move.
Have a motion, is there a second? Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it unanimous. Article 2, "To hear and act on the recommendations of the Board of Selectmen and the Finance and Appropriation Advisory Committee, or take any other action relative thereto." Recognize the FAA.
The FAA recommends this article be accepted as written, and I so move.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it unanimous. Article 3, "Revolving Accounts. To establish and authorize for the next fiscal year, 2016, revolving funds established pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 53E and One Half of the Massachusetts General Laws. Said funds to be received by the town treasurer, and credited to the said revolving fund, and said funds to be dispersed by the town accountant, to offset the cost for each fund. In no case shall dispersals exceed the lesser of the sums received during the year, or the amount allowed under the provision of the aforementioned general law. Total expenses not to exceed the amount listed by each fund is noted below." I'll read off these accounts that you see in your warrant. "Geological Research Revolving Fund, total expenses not to exceed $3,000. Police Detail Cruiser, using revolving fund, total expenses not to exceed $50,000. Fire Code Violation Fund, total expenses not to exceed $7,500. Gift Shop Revolving Fund, total expenses not to exceed $2,000. West Main Street Donations, Court of Honor Veterans Bricks, total expenses not to exceed $6,000. Website Fees, total expenses not to exceed $3,000. Arrest Warrant Services, total expenses not to exceed $10,000. Firearms Permit Services, total expenses not to exceed $15,000. Fire Outside Detail, total expenses not to exceed $15,000. Board of Health Education, total expenses not to exceed $1,000. Gas Inspector, Food Burner Inspector, Plumbing Inspector, and Wire Inspectors, total expenses not to exceed $20,000 per inspector. Hazardous Materials Collection Revolving Fund, total expenses not to exceed $9,000. Planning Services Revolving Fund, total expenses not to exceed $1,000. Municipal Hearings, total expenses not to exceed $2,000. Fire Alarm Boxes, uh, will be ruled out of order as we no longer operate any municipal alarm system. Cemetery Fees, total expenses not to exceed $2,000. Council on, Council on Aging Meals, total expenses not to exceed $5,000. Library Lost Books, total expenses not to exceed $5,000. Animal Care, total expenses not to exceed $15,000. This time, I'll recognize the FAA.
The FAA recommends this article be accepted as written, and I so move.
You have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Yes, I'll recognize the town clerk. That's correct. We can see. Would you like to, the FAA, if you would amend your motion to say you accept it as read as opposed to accept it as written?
The FAA recommends this article be accepted as read, and I so move.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion or any questions? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it unanimous. Article 4, Fiscal Year 2016 Budget. "To see if the town will vote to determine the sums of the money the town will raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds to defray the charges and expenses of the town, and provide for a reserve fund, and including debt and interest for the ensuing year, or take any other action relative thereto." This time, in the packet out front, you would have received a copy of the budget. And you may have to share with your neighbor, because we got packed house tonight. What I'd like to do at this time is I'll recognize the FAA, and ask him for a motion for the budget, and I'll ask for a second, and then we'll enter discussion of the budget. I will read the budget at that time, in the line item form that you see here, and I ask that during that time, if you have a question, just to raise your hand, or, actually, you don't have to raise anything, just yell "hold," and I'll probably hear you. If I don't, you can yell it again, because we all like to sit in the back, and sometimes it's hard to hear down front. I'll put a "hold" next to that item, we'll come back and discuss that, um, as I'm done reading the entire budget, okay? That's how we do it every year, and it seems to work fairly well for us. In addition, I'm also going to read the revenue source of the budget items, which I believe is on the back of the budgetary form, so we all know where the funds are coming from. That is required by the Department of Revenue. If we don't do that, we'll have a problem. At this time, I'll recognize the FAA.
The FAA recommends this article be accepted as written, and I so move.
The first and a second. The budget for fiscal year 2016. Accounting, $60,515.86 to include his salary, um, that's the treasure collector right there, I'm sorry, we'll go with that. Animal Control, $14,558. Assessors, $95,042. Buildings and Grounds, $135,048.12. Building Inspector, $52,624.40. Cemetery Commission, $1,106.80. Town Clerk, $85,533.50 to include salary of $58,018. Collector, $69,530. Conservation, $7,655.40. Council on Aging, $101. Emergency Management, $1,000. Economic Development Committee, $100. FAA, $10,690.64. Fire Department, $899,408.43. Health, $38,898.22. Highway, $821,313.84. Historical Commission, $650. Information Technology, $14,832.40. Inspectors, Sailor of Weights, $2,501. Library, $231,952.48. Moderator, $1. Everyone laughed something. Municipal Expenses, $149,271.40. Parks, $1,501. Personnel Board, $650. Planning Board, $47,547.97. Police, $1,243,596. Recycling, $136,250. Selectmen, $123,741.36. Town Administrator, $118,180. Should be noted that the treasurer slash collector, as we read earlier, the salaries included of $80,974 for these items that we read. Tree Warden, $4,000. Veteran Services, $115,953.26. Zoning Board of Appeals, $3,023.84. Which gives us a total general fund of $7,256,531.33. For our schools, Dudley-Chalfont Regional, $6,982,715. Bay Path, $791,957. For a total general fund, including schools of $7,774,672. Enterprise Funds of $981,626.65 for the Water Department. Sewer Department, $1,015,996.95 for a total of $1,997,623.60. For a total town budget of $17,028,826.93. Funding sources are as follows. For general fund budget revenue sources, taxation, real property and personal, $8,942,839. New growth, $100,000. Debt Exclusions, $1,670,450. State Aid Reimbursements, $1,818,542. Bond Premium to Reduce the Tax Rate, $27,871. Local Receipts, $2,429,050. Additional Raise and Appropriate, $93,654 for total revenue sources of $15,82,406. Water and Sewer Revenues of $1,997,624. Other Sources of Miscellaneous, $164,000. School Turnback, $164,000. Then we have some assessments that offset state and county regional assessments of Cherry Street Offset of $17,045. 2014 Snow and Ice, $83,466.12, less $39,750 from FEMA, for a total of $43,716. Overlay from Assessors, $125,000, for a total credit of $215,203. So a total revenue source of $17,028,27. So the total general fund budget, including schools' state assessments, $15,31,203. The total enterprise budget, sewer funding from sewer fees and charges of $1,015,997. Water funding from water fees and charges of $981,627, for a total of $1,997,000. It's $1,997,624. Again, a total of $17,028,27, let's see what's in the balance budget. I didn't hear any "hold." Is there any discussion on the budget as presented? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it unanimous. Article 5, Authorization to Enter into a Pilot Agreement. See if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a payment in lieu of taxes for pilot agreement. Said agreement not to exceed 20 years in duration, and subject to other terms and conditions the Selectmen deem appropriate. Pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 38H, and regulations promulgated thereunder with respect to annual payments in lieu of real and personal property taxes relative to land located off West Dudley Road. Said pilot agreement is based upon the proposed construction and operation of a solar photovoltaic power plant with a capacity of approximately 4.4135 megawatts, more or less, to be executed with Seaboard Solar Operations LLC, or its successor, or take any other action relative thereto. Chair, recognize the FAA.
The FAA defers to the Board of Selectmen.
Recognize Mr. Marzy.
Board of Selectmen, um, recommends that this be passed as written.
Sorry, I'm a shark, I remember. Board of Selectmen recommends that this, this passes as written, nice and move. Thank you. Is a motion to, is there a motion to accept? We'll get to that. I have a motion and a second on the floor to accept Article 5 as written. This time, I'll open up to discussion, is there any discussion? If you do so, if you raise your hand, I'll recognize you, you can step to the microphone up in the back there, and please state your name, address, and then ask away. There's a microphone right, right behind you. Yeah, we can hear you.
Margaret Farr, from, uh, the Filing Row in West Dudley. Uh, could you just, uh, highlight level of what and where is this being built?
Sure, I'm not sure, is there anyone from the Board of Selectmen that knows the address of the project, or anybody else with it? Thank you. Let's ask the town administrator, Greg, to help with that question.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Greg Daliotones, and I'm the town administrator. So this would be on, um, approximately 28.28 acres, situated at Durfee in Fish Roads. However, the, um, site address, the site would be located at 72 West Dudley Road.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion or questions? Yes, if we can please step to the microphone, thank you.
My name is Michael Mann from Five Park and Chill Road, and I wonder, is this the first of many projects? Has this project been talked about through, in, through the any town meeting? And, um, what will it do to the neighbors and neighborhoods that this is happening in? What also is the town receiving for, for, for this, uh, project, which is gonna make somebody, I guess, uh, rich or more wealthy? And is this, again, is this the first of many? Do we have a plan if we're gonna be doing these large, uh, solar installations? Um, what says this one goes and that one doesn't?
Hey, I think some of your questions might be directed towards the town administrator, um, to help me answer some of those, uh, some of those, I'll let Greg answer some of those, and hopefully that's satisfied, and if not, I can add some, add some to that.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So the proposed project is, um, first of all, each project must come before town meeting to be authorized and be approved. So presently, town meeting had authorized a project to be approved, um, back at, back in the fall. So this will be the second project that's come forward within the last year that needs to be approved by a town meeting. So the purpose of town meeting is to give the Board of Selectmen as the chief executive, the elected officials, the ability to enter into the agreement. The Board of Selectmen is, uh, here to negotiate and look out for the town's best interests. However, they need approval of town meeting to do so on the state law. In this particular case, the, uh, if town would enter into a payment over tax agreement, it would be for a 20-year period. It would provide the town about, um, in rough terms, over that $20,000, about $50,000 a year to start off with. There's a second project that had been, um, approved by town meeting, and if you look at those two projects together, um, the amount of money that the town would bring in over a period of 20 years is about $115,000 a year, but right out of the gate, this is about a $49,000 payment to the town, once the facility is up and running.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Yes.
Hi, I'm Virginia McKinstry, um, Old Southbridge Road. My question is, what zone, what area is this zoned in? Is it residential? Is it business?
Maybe a question, is this come before the planning board yet, this project for site plan review? Could anyone, anyone familiar with that project and the planning board, let us know what the zone might be in that area?
The zone for this project would be residential, 87, it's a two-acre zone.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen. I neglected to mention when I was up a minute ago, the, um, annual amount that gets paid to the town increases by 2% a year, so over the course of the life of a project, you can expect a 2% annual once later.
It's, it's important to note that a town meeting, as Greg said, we're here to compile the select- that at town meeting, as Greg said, we're here to empower the selectmen. All of these projects have a process that must be followed to become approved even to get to this stage. They must come before the planning board. Depending on where they're located in the zoning area, the planning board then has some authority and some control over those projects. So that's, 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 so we're here tonight not too much to vote on the project itself, but to vote on the empowerment of the tax pilot program. Yes, I'll recognize it.
Susan Jameson, Seventy Corbin Road. If this area is residential, I don't believe a commercial project of this nature should be situated in a residential section.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Try to, I know everyone, not everyone is used to this, but we try to keep applause to a minimum here, I know. While one side or the other like to favor. Well, I'd like to keep some decorum here if we could. Is there any other comments or discussion? Okay. Seeing none, I will call the vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Moderators in doubt. If you want to do a standing, count. All those who voted in the affirmative, who said aye, please stand. We're gonna, we're actually trying to decide just to hold off on the count. We're just trying to do this hold off on the count. We're just gonna do a stand right now. We're just doing a visual. All right, if you could please be seated. No, I'm sorry, please, please.
Excuse me.
Ma'am, I'm gonna ask you to sit down, please. I'm in the middle of a vote. Thank you. I'm going to ask you to please sit down. I'm in the middle of a vote.
I, I just tried to count.
No, but, but I'm sorry, I couldn't recognize, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, listen, I thought you were trying to do something else. I apologize. I, I thought, we don't need to do the count. I have a visual, we're just gonna do a visual now. If I'm still in doubt, we'll have to count. I'm sorry. Thank you. If you voted in the negative or nay, please stand. Thank you, you can sit. The ayes have it by majority vote. Yes.
Excuse me, I, um, I'm very sorry.
That's okay.
We have three folks in the back that weren't quite sure which way the vote was going. And so they weren't sure if they should stand up or not at the beginning.
Okay. Well, the vote's been declared. I, I appreciate that. I was quite clear as to what to do. I don't think there was any question on that. It's okay. Thank you. Article six. To see if the town will vote to establish a capital improvement stabilization fund pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, chapter forty, section five B. The purpose of said fund is to fund items of a capital nature as set forth in the town bylaws or to pay the costs associated with the issuance of debt for capital items and projects and further to transfer the sum of eighty-five thousand dollars from receipts reserved from the sale of real estate, which proceeds of the sale of the old Liberty to said account or take any other action relative thereto. I'll recognize the FAA.
The FAA recommends this article be accepted as written with the funds coming from a transfer from the receipts reserved from the sale of the old library, and I so move.
Thank you. If you could just add to your motion, uh, the exact amount of the transfer?
The exact amount of the transfer is eighty-four thousand, five hundred seventy-seven dollars and forty cents.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it unanimous. Article seven. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from any available funds a sum of two hundred, uh, sorry, two thousand five hundred dollars to assist the Economic Development Committee in developing marketing material for the purpose of promoting Dudley to a business and industry or take any other action relative thereto. I recognize the FAA.
The FAA recommends this article be accepted as written with the funds coming from a transfer from fiscal year fifteen, Bay Path Assessment Turnback, and I so move.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it unanimous. Article number eight. To see if the town will vote to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen to borrow pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, chapter forty-four, section three, section seven, three, nine, A. Sums of money to be expended under the control of the Fire Station Building Committee as follows. If you notice on your warrant, there are some, uh, there's a motion in bold after review by the town council, uh, and bond council. In order to be exact without wording, the language in bold is what I will read to make sure we have no issues going forward if this is to pass. I move the, excuse me, I move that the town appropriate the sum of nine million, two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars to be expended under the control of the Fire Station Building Committee for the following purposes. Eight million, nine hundred thousand for the design, construction and furnishing of a new fire station, including costs incidental thereto to be built on the property owned by the town located at seventy-one West Main Street. One hundred fifty thousand to remount Dudley ambulance number two, including related costs. One hundred twenty-five thousand for the refurbishment of the Dudley engine number two and related costs. And fifty thousand dollars for the acquisition of property located on U Street as it relates additional parking and access for the fire station building project. And to meet said appropriation, the treasurer with approval of the selectmen is authorized to borrow such sum under the, under and consistent with Massachusetts General Law, chapter forty-four, section three, nine, A. So, excuse me, Massachusetts General Law, chapter forty-four, section seven, three, nine, A. Or any other source of authority. All said amounts shall be, shall be subject to a proposition two and a half debt exclusion question in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, chapter fifty-nine, section twenty-one, C, K. This time I'll recognize the FAA.
The FAA recommends this article be accepted as written with the funds coming from borrowing, and I so move.
There's a motion and a second. Yes, uh, accepted as read, correct? In your motion?
Accepted as read.
Accepted as read. As read. Right, if you could just admit. That's all right.
The FAA recommends this article be accepted as read with the funds coming from borrowing, and I so move.
Motion and a second. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
We can all yell. Okay. So I'm in doubt with that. So again, we're gonna try this. If you voted in the affirmative, please stand. I do not need a count. I'm just doing a visual. Okay, you can sit now. All those who voted in the negative or said nay, please stand. Okay, thank you. You can be seated. The ayes have it by majority vote, so. I'm sorry. The ayes have it by two-thirds vote, excuse me. So moved. Article nine. To see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to enter into a tax increment finance agreement with the Webco Chemical Corporation, four-twenty West Main Street, Dudley, Massachusetts, and said agreement to be entered into between the parties for a period not to exceed twenty years and shall provide for a reduction in new real estate and personal property taxes that result from eligible investments made pursuant to the Massachusetts Economic Development Incentive Program or take any action relative thereto. Chair recognizes the FAA.
The FAA wishes to defer to the board of selectmen.
I'll recognize Mr. Marzy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The board of selectmen wishes to approve this as printed in the warrant. Nice and move.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it by majority vote. Article ten. To see if the town will vote to amend its personnel bylaws in employee handbook, section eight P, returning the leave as follows. Delete section eight P in its entirety and replace with a new section eight P entitled parental leave and add full-time male and female employees are eligible for eight weeks of parental leave pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, chapter one hundred forty-nine, section one oh five D as amended for the birth or adoption of a child under the age of eighteen or for adopting a child under the age of twenty-three if the child is mentally or physically disabled. The leave shall be unpaid. However, the employee may use concurrent, uh, concurrently with the parental leave accrued paid sick, vacation or personal time as it is, as it is allowed by law or take any action relative thereto. The chair recognizes the FAA.
The FAA wishes to defer to the personnel board.
Thank you. Is anyone here from the personnel board? Thank you.
Kim Dunford, Ritz on board, I'm on the personnel board. We, yeah, I don't want to say it. We think it should pass as, as read.
Thank you. I have a motion. Is there a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'll recognize the town administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The purposes of this change is to line the bylaw up with a change in state law. The change in state law recognizes that male employees have certain rights and there are the rights that extended for physically amending handicapped children. So again, this is done out of the necessity to become consistent with law.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it unanimous. Article eleven. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds a sum of twenty-three thousand dollars to fund one-third of the cost of the triennial recertification of real estate and personal property values for fiscal year two thousand eighteen as required by the Commonwealth Department of Revenue or take any action relative thereto. Chair recognizes the FAA.
The FAA recommends that this article be passed over, and I so move.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor of passing over, please state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by majority vote. Article twelve. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds a sum of forty-one thousand, six hundred fifty-five dollars to fund one-half of the cost of the cyclical inspections of real estate for fiscal year two thousand eighteen as required by the Commonwealth or Massachusetts Department of Revenue or take any other action relative thereto. The chair recognizes the FAA.
The FAA recommends this article be accepted as written with the funds coming from a transfer from the overlay surplus, and I so move.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it unanimous. Article thirteen. To see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to acquire land parcels and easements as may be necessary for the construction of roadway safety improvements on Dressley Hill Road under the Federal Highway Administration High Risk Rural Roads Program and to raise and appropriate or transfer from any available source of funds sum of one hundred dollars to acquire said land parcels and easements through all legal means including donation, purchase, and eminent domain pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, chapter seventy-nine, take any other action relative thereto. Chair recognizes the FAA.
The FAA recommends this article be accepted as written with the funds coming from free cash, and I so move.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it unanimous. Article fourteen. To see if the town will vote to raise, appropriate, borrow or transfer the sum of eleven thousand, three hundred and two dollars for the purpose of archival preservation of eight town ledgers as follows. Ledger eighteen thirty-nine to eighteen sixty-eight, six hundred seventy-five dollars. Ledger eighteen seventy-four to eighteen eighty-eight, two thousand four hundred fifty dollars. Selectmen's records and miscellaneous, two thousand three hundred and three dollars. Taxes eighteen fifty to eighteen fifty-nine slash eighteen sixty, one thousand nine hundred seventy-four dollars. Taxes eighteen forty to eighteen fifty, one thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. Register our voters, seven hundred twenty-five dollars. Register our voters, seven hundred fifty dollars. Uh, for ambulation, Town Lines Book eleven, six hundred seventy-five dollars. With a total project of eleven thousand, three hundred and two dollars. The chair recognizes the FAA.
The FAA wishes to defer to the board of selectmen.
I recognize Mr. Marzy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The board of selectmen would like to approve this as printed in the warrant with the corrected amount of the total being one thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty-seven cents and the source of funds being overlay surplus as recommended by the board of selectmen and board of, uh, board of assessors, and I so move.
There's a motion and a second. Yes, recognized. Hi Nancy.
Hi, Nancy, Uncle, as the town administrator. Um, the corrected amount of what is one thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars? It says with the correct, with the corrected amount being one thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars. And the forty-seven cents, which one of these amounts is the correct?
So.
Amended.
Amended. Okay, so you're gonna, just so I have it here, so the amount that you want to fund, we could. Excuse me. One thousand, six hundred forty-seven dollars and forty-seven cents. That's right. So just.
Is the total amount?
Yes, yes.
So that's the total. Can I, second, please? I'm on a second, please. So, Mr. Marzy, you, you weren't correcting it. You were amending.
Amending. I apologize.
It's okay.
I'm amending that, Nancy, to read one, six, four, seven, forty-seven cents. I'm amending that to read one thousand, six hundred forty-seven dollars and forty-seven cents. We'll explain in a minute.
What's the amount for?
It's, so the motion, it's, the article asked for eleven thousand, three hundred and two dollars.
Correct.
Board of Selectmen has presented a motion that amends the amount from what was written in the article to a lesser amount or a total of one thousand, six hundred forty-seven dollars and forty-seven cents. Is that correct? So there's a motion to amend the amount and a second on the floor. That's what we're discussing now. And that's what we'll be taking a vote on later. And I'll remind you of that again. Okay, this time I'll recognize Mr. Briner.
At the end of, uh, town meeting last fall, there was talk of bringing this a type of rescue project into regular town funding. With that in the standing, we put forward this amount, eleven thousand, three hundred and two forty volumes as a part of the budget. This is very disappointing. However, are there any plans to take this up in the fall to?
Sure, if you like, I'll, Mr. Marzy. I'll let Mr. Marzy instead.
Yeah, Michael, uh, the board of selectmen supports this a hundred percent. We've discussed this. I definitely would love to have this as part of the normal budget process. Um, rather than passing it over entirely, we wanted to make sure that we could fund some of the things in this list to get that started. So when we get to the fall-
some of the things in this list to get that started, so when we get to the fall, we can fund it properly then, the rest of it. That's our, hopefully, the intention.
Okay, uh, that wasn't very clear from what we had here.
Okay.
I need this clarification. Okay, uh, all right, I'm okay with that, I guess.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna call a vote. Remember, the vote, the, um, the motion on the floor is to pass Article 14, however, with an amended amount of $1,647.47. And where's the funding coming from in that? From the, uh, overlay surplus account, correct? Thank you. So I'll call the vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, nay.
Nay!
The ayes have it by majority vote. Article 15. To see if the town will vote to repurpose and transfer to sewer retained earnings, a sum of $30,000 from Engineering Services, Article 11, Spring Town Meeting 2014, and to furthermore transfer from sewer retained earnings, a sum of $30,000 for the new purpose of installing alarm systems at sewer pump stations, or take any other action relative thereto. Chair recognizes the FAA.
The FAA recommends that this article be accepted as written with the funds coming from a transfer from retained earnings, and I so move.
There's a motion in a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it unanimous. Article 16. To see if the town will vote to transfer from the, the sum of $12,500 from the Road Machinery Fund Account to the, to the Machinery Maintenance Account for fiscal year 2016, take any other action relative thereto. I'll recognize the FAA.
The FAA recommends that this article be passed over, and I so move.
There's a motion, and a second, it should pass over. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor of passing over, please state aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it unanimous. Article 17. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from any available funds, a sum of $63,500 for the purchase, actually, I'm just gonna back up here, pardon me, excuse me. Article 17 for the Highway Department is, uh, one of these that we just needed to, uh, revise after speaking with Town Council. So I'm going to read what is, uh, underlined, you'll see, as opposed to the article to carry that is, that, uh, what I, what I write, excuse me, what I, what I read, pardon me. And, uh, I'll recognize the FAA to carry the motion as so read. So Article 17, Highway Department. The town appropriate the sum of $63,500 for the purchase of a new one-ton dump truck and plow as part of the town's fiscal year 2016 capital improvement program recommended by the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, and to meet said appropriation, the treasurer with approval of the selectmen is authorized to borrow such, such sum under and consistent with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 44, Section 934, or any other source of authority. I'll recognize the FAA.
The FAA recommends that this article be accepted as read with the funds coming from borrowing, and I so move.
There's a motion in a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by majority vote. And that's two-thirds majority vote. Article 18. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from any available funds, a sum of $7,000 for the purchasing of lawn mowing equipment and related accessories, and to sell or trade the old 48-inch cut mower, and apply the proceeds towards the purchase of the new mower, take any other action relative thereto. Chair recognizes the FAA.
The FAA recommends this article be accepted as written with the funds coming from free cash, and I so move.
I have a motion, is there a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by majority vote. Article 19. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds, a sum of $1,000 for the purchase of a sounding unit and metal detector for cemeteries, take any other action relative thereto. Chair recognizes the FAA.
The FAA recommends this article be accepted as written with the funds coming from a transfer from the cemetery perpetual care account, and I so move.
There's a motion in a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, nay.
Nay!
The ayes have it by majority vote. Article 20. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $1,000 from the arrest, from the arrest warrant services account to the police overtime account to cover costs incurred during fiscal year 2015, or take any other action relative thereto. Chair recognizes the FAA.
The FAA recommends this article should be accepted as written with the funds coming from a transfer from the arrest warrant services account, and I so move.
Thank you. There's a motion in a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by majority vote. Article 21. To see if the town will vote to transfer to the police overtime account, a sum of $5,000 from the firearm services revolving fund account to offset costs incurred during fiscal year 2015, take any other action relative thereto. Chair recognizes the FAA.
The FAA recommends this article be accepted as written with the funds coming from a transfer from the firearm services revolving fund, and I so move.
There's a motion in a second, is there any discussions? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, nay.
Nay!
The ayes have it by majority vote. Article 22. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds, a sum of $10,000, to pay for costs associated with police overtime and retiree buyback costs for fiscal year 2015, take any other action relative thereto. Chair recognizes the FAA.
The FAA recommends this article be accepted as written with the funds coming from Bay Path Turnback, although we'd like to correct the amount to $6,032.21, and I so move.
Is that amended amount?
Amended.
Amended amount, yes.
Thank you. So I have a motion, and a second, to accept Article 22 as read with an amended amount of $6,032.21. And the funds coming from the 2015 Bay Path Regional Vocational School Assessment?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by majority vote. Article 23. Again, on this article, I'll read from the items underlined in your, what's, uh, in front of you. See if the town appropriate the sum of $36,000 for the purchase and equipping of a new police cruiser as part of the town's fiscal year 2016 capital improvement program recommended by the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, and to meet said appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen is authorized to borrow such sum under and consistent with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 44, Section 7, 934, or any other source of authority. The chair recognizes the FAA.
The FAA recommends this article be accepted as written with the funds coming from borrowing, and I so move.
I have a motion, is there a second? I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call a vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by majority, two-thirds. Article 24. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds, the sums of $255.79 to pay interest due on borrowing, $23,750 for principal due, $82,366.12 to be added to the snow removal account, and such, other such budgets and appropriations as may be necessary for fiscal year 2015, or take any other action relative thereto.
The FAA recommends this article be accepted as written with the funds coming from a transfer from the fiscal year 2015 Bay Path Regional Vocational School Assessment of $255.79 for interest on borrowing, transfer from fiscal year 2015 Bay Path Regional Vocational School Assessment, the sum of $2,669, and from overlay, the sum of $6,750 for the Norfolk County Agricultural School Transportation, transfer from the boyie merit pool, the sum of $558 for the town clerk's salary, transfer from the merit pool, the sum of $779 for the treasurer collective's salary, and I so move.
I have a motion in a second, is there any discussion? Yes, I recognize the Town Minister.
Mr. Moderator, just want to, uh, point out the language in the, um, underlined section in the fourth line, which I don't believe was read, was said from free cash, the sum of $21,081, for a total of $23,750 for principal on borrowing, and then the words transfer, and then it continued on as the FAA indicated. I just wanted to, wanted to point a point of clarification if anyone heard the same as me.
Mr. Moderator, I missed the line.
Yes, if you could, please.
Read everything again, or just the line? The line.
What was the line that you missed?
I missed the line, from free cash, the sum of $21,081, for a total of $23,750 for principal on borrowing, transfer.
Thank you. We'll amend your motion. There's a motion, and a second, we had some discussions. Is there any other questions, or any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it unanimous. Article 25. You had a couple scrupulous errors on your warrant, so I will let you know what those are as I go through this here. To see if the town will vote to amend the Dudley zoning bylaw, the Dudley zoning map, to overlay the zoning on West Main Street to Business 15 on the, and it should say north, not east, side from Village Street to Patterson Avenue, and on the, and it should say south side, not west, from, and it should say Progress, not Patterson Avenue, to Indean Road, and then we're going to add, for a distance of 500 feet parallel to both sides of West Main Street, or take any action relative thereto. At this time, I'll recognize, uh, the FAA.
The FAA wishes to defer to the Planning Board.
Mr. Moderator, the Planning Board would like to ask, uh, the town meeting to pass this article as read with the changes that you provided, and that we also held a public hearing and duly advertised this change.
Thank you for the report and the motion. Is there any, uh, do I have a second? I have a motion, and a second, thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call a vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by two-thirds majority. Now, we have Article 26, which was a petition article. Are the petitioners who submitted this here tonight? I believe this was already, uh, submitted under Article 14, which was funded, so I'm just gonna ask to see if you would care to withdraw it at this time.
Tell us just, tell us just to, uh, make sure that the article is.
Thank you. So we're gonna withdraw that? Thank you.
Did you say withdraw?
Yes. Okay, this time I'll recognize a motion to adjourn. Motion in a second, seeing no objections, so move. Thank you all for coming.